Rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you mind? Any other prayer, please?
Power heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of our business meeting tonight, that we can make the decisions on behalf of our citizens that will glorify you and help all the people that rely on us to take care of the businesses of the city. In this we pray.
Okay, reading and approval of minutes from March 18th.
Make the motion that we provoke a reading of the meeting minutes and pass them as presented.
A motion by Pillar.
Second.
And second by Wolf. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, with motion by Wolf, approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Stern. All in favor of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Alright, agenda approved. Six A. We have several requests for free and reduced rent. This, um... Under D is Hardware Inc.
That's for permit.
And that's for a permit, okay. So, really want to tie it up?
Monty, you said all four requests are going to be using the kitchen?
No, just if they are using the kitchen, there'll be charges and appropriate fee.
Alright. So I'll make the motion that we group the four requests, that we would provide free rental of the hall, but if the kitchen is being used, that there will be a fee associated with that.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Okay, then the permit for raffle for Hardware Inc. Okay.
No, I did not include that, because that's the...
Just the free reason.
A, B, C, and F. So Hardware Inc. is doing a... Wants a permit for raffle that would support the ambulance service, which I believe would make them a... First city organization. Yep. Therefore, that would waive the fee?
No.
No?
They still pay the $10 permit fee.
Okay.
But they need that classification to qualify for a raffle, correct?
The intended use for the local permit is for community spirited organizations.
Yes.
Okay.
Or classes.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Wolf.
I'll second it.
Second by Pillar. All in favor, alright, sorry, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Period. Nine A. Water Sewer.
I think that's last week. On Third Avenue, uh... Northwest. We had a major sewer, uh... Backup, plug-in, and I guess we were probably on for almost a week, I'd say, like five days maybe. It was plugged up. As it goes down in the main there from the top. I'm not sure, it's what was all in there, is it all like hair or something, is that what it was?
It's like a big tree root or whatever, I don't know, Monty's picture shows all the way out, and finally got fish out of there.
And just build debris build up.
Yeah, tree roots and that big root that's... I think he's got the picture of that guy pulling it out of there. It's a little blurry. There, that's basically pulled out. That's actually, it's maybe your arm.
Yeah, it's about minus two feet long.
And that was on the city section of the Viking Court.
Yeah, or the, well...
Well, there was more in there that was in the main too, that was attached to that.
Right, we get at the main on Third, and I came out of the union between Fifth and... Fifth and Third, this chunk here.
That was, that piece there actually was probably in that line and hanging into the main. Probably invisible.
And I had just some quick patchwork we did, so we could cover it back up and get the street back open and the people back online with their sewer.
And that would be considered a permanent fix for that?
No, a permanent fix, a proper fix would be digging that up and putting in an actual manhole.
Okay.
More engineering recommended, or as you understand the procedure, when a sewer line changes directions, then it changes directions through a manhole.
And that would be part of our discussion this evening.
Okay, any other questions for Dave, we can talk more about it too. If anybody has any other questions or thoughts.
So then is this line then, this gonna be... Like a sewer main, or is it just their, just their, I guess, individual sewer, like cap?
Well, this, uh, one with the black hole is not like having to be tapped into the main on Third through the manhole. That gives us some...
What do you mean, like is that line though? Like the sewer main? Is that just their, their line though?
There's...
Right. They're off these permits.
Since it's more than one, it might be a question that we have to visit with Pat about. It serves three different residents, so is it really just a service line, or... Or what, where the classification is that it becomes our line?
And the recommendation by Moore to put a, a man...
A regular manhole in there because it is changing, changing directions from east west to north, or to south.
And so we could, and so we can jet it and flush it.
And so they, they ultimately, whoever will put in something that has caps or whatever that you can really remove and then jet out.
Yeah, it'll happen with our regular manhole up the street or whatever. We gave some of the information to John, and he did pass through from our engineering, so he's in the process of getting the price of what a man...
They did put clean outs in as well.
Yeah, we put three clean outs.
Okay.
Up the line.
Up the line.
Up the line, okay.
But those are actually for like minor plugs.
Sure.
Or whatever, you have to do ma- major jetting or whatever, you actually have to go to a man.
They come up in people's, people's yards then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two in cataruses and one in ramboes.
Okay.
So then on the clean outs, are we gonna lower those down to...
Yeah, they'll either be...
Ground level.
Yeah, a little above ground level, or I suppose some of them actually come at ground level, so they're even more, they're top of what they are marked, so they can find them.
Should we put some type of metallic throw around it, or...
Yeah, we put something around them, so they have a metal detector, and if they get shortened up to that length.
Oh, does their dumpster rip and stuff up basically? Yeah, I was down in the basement that night. Not, not great. At all.
We will be providing information to our insurance for going to mechanical.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave? Or Casey on this? I know you guys put a lot of hours in it, and the street crew and the water department. Tim, Tim Schwartz is another question.
Well, the type of like that it was to, you know...
Yeah, that was...
The raised question right off the get-go and... And nobody really noticed that was actually one there, so it slowed down the repair process by quite a bit.
Okay. All I have. Thanks, Casey. Street Cemetery, Dave? Those are street sweepers running, or...
Yeah, we got most street sweepers off picking up pea gravel, we're starting on them streets first, so we can get them cleaned up, and when the car becomes available, we can actually start crack sealing it. Lot of pea gravel on the streets, so pretty slow picking up with the sweepers, they got their hands full. And I'm still waiting. Mercer County, the other day I talked to them, and they have their tar pit repaired. They haven't turned it on yet, but when they get it fired up, and they're gonna put in their, their orders for material for tar, and they will give me a call and let me know when it's available for us to pick up and how much we can get.
Any time next week?
Hopefully next week or first part of the following. Depends on how fast they can get it delivered.
Those cracks are wide open now.
Mercer County, I was talking about, it looked like 45 miles or something like that, I'm not sure, but I told them how much tar we need, and we'll see what we get.
With all this pea gravel we have, Dave, is there a chance that we could, on some of our streets, um, when we're tarring, put that pea gravel over the top of that, of that tar?
Too much. You don't want to create that...
You don't want to create that, yeah, that bomb.
Okay.
We use sand, we talked about doing...
Paper?
Doing like the paper, like what Aztec did when they initially did that, I'll do some quick checking on that.
Okay.
I'd like to try that option.
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to do something in town just to alleviate the, that some vehicles.
The one by paper, I kinda like the idea because it takes so much sand, just to cover a little crack like that, you sand the whole street, just leave off so much sand, the second time it don't...
Sure.
I want to find what kind of paper they're actually using, or where to get it.
Okay.
So then are we gonna do, do, um, on the streets that were just, then I guess...
Just chip seal because, uh...
Last year, right?
Yeah, the other ones they're gonna come in and do, they overlaid and rebuilt.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
I got the dimensions of all of the city parking lots, that John from our engineering would have mentioned this winter, we'd track CLM, and then have them do a, Aztec do a, a chip seal on those. And so he's working up with the dimensions, Monty and I got together, what he decides that he's working on, getting that price put together.
I noticed that our parking lot behind IBEW is...
Well, hopefully like a chip seal over the top of that would definitely buy some time, or definitely extend the life of it.
Yeah, we may have to cut up...
Northwest corner is the worst.
Yeah, northwest corner, then. Southeast also work, yeah. Okay. Questions for...
Streets that, I got... I got one thing, you know, about the new LED, I guess, streetlights. When you're, people don't really care for them, you know, so I'm... You know, I think in this, like North Star One, those were all LEDs, you know, from like three or four... Three or four, I guess, like years ago. I was gonna drive up there with the same thing that we got here now, but I just don't think it was.
Well, on the flip side, I've been hearing a lot of positive comments too. People love that it's, they can market some neighborhoods and it's...
And the technologies have continued to change over the years, so... So what was installed as an LED technology, three, four years ago, is probably gonna be quite different than what's out there now.
I think a lot of it's simply just change, people don't get used to their, and not shiny and, you know, and now it's shining a little bit brighter and they get a little bit more...
Sure.
Lighter to their house, so...
Are people asking you to look into a casey to see if there's a, we could, they want to change, or...
Yeah. You know, because I've noticed too, oh, it's more of a concentrated...
Correct.
Brightness straight down, it doesn't like stand out. Those LED guys, like darker areas, you know, in spots, but, um... You know, I got, also then, you know, you know, as they asked me why they would do this, I said, well, every year, supposed to save us like five or six thousand dollars, right? And they were then like wondering on their, like monthly, monthly, I guess, like streetlight fee, if that's gonna go down or not. So I told them probably not, but, uh...
Let him know that it won't go.
Five thousand dollars a year is gonna be a lot to figure out.
Well, let's see after year one, what, what did, what actually, what is the status of... It'd be great if we do say that, but if you divide that up, I... Quite a good question. I made sure to see that too.
Because the other thing is, we didn't really choose these, MBU came with several, what do you mean?
This is what they're doing in all their, all their communities.
Yep.
Okay, any other, any other questions for Casey? Alright. Finance, I see.
Something at this time.
Police, fire?
Yes, with the police department, I had opportunity to visit with Jim, and they did some analysis on replacement of their tasers amongst the police force. And they did some due diligence on the single taser cost versus acquiring four in the first year, and then a fifth one in the second year, and running that over a 60-month payment program. And the numbers look favorable for the 60-month purchase plan. It's kind of a rent-own, if you will, and during the course of that entire period of time, yes, if anything happens to any of those tasers, they would be replaced and/or repaired. Whereas if you, if you buy it straight up, one, then it's yours, and you're responsible for, for any kind of repairs or anything on that. So, with that, I would like them to make a motion, and this is budgeted money, that we approve at the expense for year one, $1,364. That will give us four new tasers, along with their holsters and miscellaneous battery packs and things of that sort. $1,364.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the, what's the yearly cost after that?
The yearly cost after that, it actually drops down, year two would be $1,164. It would be that same cost then for year three, four, and five.
So what's, what's the penalty if you drop out of the program? If you just continue the contract, what's, what happens?
If you return the equipment, the contract is, is done at that point.
Without any...
Without financial penalty.
Yeah. Okay. So in fact, you're only committing this...
Only committing that year's money, $1,364. So, I don't know, by approving this today and referencing the monies for the future, does that approve it then for the entire duration, or would we...
The future monies, we would include in the budget, if you can determine at that time if you want to continue with it.
Okay. But we would still bring it to discussion?
Yes.
At a commission meeting each of the subsequent years?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, uh... So then, what's the cost? Cost if we were to buy them, alright?
If you were to buy a single unit, the cost is $1,830.
It was more cost effective to do the plan.
Well, what, what ends up happening is over the course, like I said, of those 60 months, you, you had a taser drops in, in the course of doing business out there and busts on the street. They replace it at no additional cost.
Based on the 60-month warranty.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion. Second. Second by Stern, discussion? So then I guess we're gonna get, I guess, like four of them?
Four of them the first year, and then they add, I believe, a fifth one on the second year, is that right?
I wasn't only aware that they made it.
Maybe it's just four. Okay, one free. Yep, it's just four.
You have a discussion? Roll call.
Pillar? Aye. Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried.
Thank you.
Any others, Dan? Okay, I'm gonna back up to, uh, water sewer, I missed nine eight. Dave, is working on specs for a garbage truck, you wanna talk about that a bit, what plan would be?
Yeah, I got preliminary specs, wrote up, Monty typed them, Dave, and gave copy to Casey to review. So then I'll go over them after the meeting here, whatever, by next meeting, there should be something for the whole commission to... To look at them.
Okay, do they give us a price for a compactor, or... No?
No, that would come in on debating.
Yeah. For the old, the old truck?
Yeah.
Alright. HCD, Uster, you have any?
Nothing to say today.
Alright. In my report, I did get a phone call the other night from Arlis Moss. If any of you driven be around Jimmy's or behind Jimmy's through that alleyway, you'll notice that there was quite a bit of water there, it's, it is soaking in a little bit more now. Some water was draining to the west of that alley end, uh... But, uh, Arlis was still concerned about the water back there and the mess, and, uh... And one of the things I did mention to Arlis is that, you know, when they moved snow around, they made some really big piles of snow back there, and had, had them melt and go somewhere, and... Uh, he was asking if we could at least try something we haven't tried, and that is just to take our blade and maybe just make a cut, um, behind Jimmy's there, out to the street, so the water would run a little easier. I don't see why that would be such a big deal, to give it a try. I know it's elevation-wise, we gotta be pretty careful with that blade, but, you know, we... Start at zero and go to, you know, a couple inches, because it's not, that's pretty flat back there. So I don't know who would be your best operator, Dave, does that be Mike on the blade, or... But, um, I said I'd bring it up, unless we have a different plan or different idea. You know, more engineering did give us some different costs and some solutions, and none of them were cheap. This is cheap, but I think we should try it.
Would we be obligated to do 811 on that, or is it...
Yeah, we'd have all locates or whatever, because there is utility back.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
Has anyone at this time moved their downspouts from that alley? I mean, I, I would make it clear to them that this problem will continue when it starts raining.
I can get the alley up mine up to fill and get our alley up to grade where it doesn't hold water, but the water's in the sit.
Yeah.
I did that last year.
Unless they do something.
Trenching the alley and running the water over to the neighbor, and even to the neighbor.
Unless they do something different.
I can get, we can get the alley up where their alleys are passable, but that doesn't make the water go away. Actually, which will almost make it worse.
And I did say we need to wait a lot before, so it dry out. No one's back there to tear it.
No, I, yeah, I thought Rob said that, yeah. While it was drying, he wanted us to come out there right away while it was wet, so we could watch the water run. We can't run the main tander in a mud puddle, and...
Yeah.
Wheels will bake, 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 or rust on what you're actually trying to cut.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can address those work out at the end, and it dries.
What if we were to, you know, on the curb, on the east and west side, tear that out, and put like a, like a less of a...
Little apron, more of an apron?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like right now, that curb, let's say, seems like a four-inch tall curb, you know? If we were to, let's knock that down to like one inch or something, or let it...
Straight on the street? Because if we dig that trench out to the curb, it's gonna be half much below the curb.
Yeah. I think that one option, Lord talked about, was cutting that curb on the east.
Okay.
The water would have run between them two buildings, and the two building owners weren't really, or run water between their buildings to ease.
And it's already running to the west now.
Yeah, and it will run to the east too, between, in that one area, it is, we shot a grade, and it is all going up the street. But you would have to put a little valley in the concrete on the backside of your valley, or to get it to follow the edge. The water will run both directions.
Would that be a pretty easy thing to cut out, a couple-foot section there?
Yeah.
Or something, but don't let tear out the whole.
Yeah.
Whole thing, yeah. Alright, just wanted to make sure we had that on our radar, give it a shot, it's cheaper than storm sewer. Or anything else, or even pouring the valley, you know, valley guy. Okay. That's all I have on my... Ten A, post-pronk committee donation request. We donated $125 in the past, is that correct, Monty?
Yep.
$125 for the past several years we've been doing, so what would the board like to do, if anything?
I'll make a motion to donate $125.
Okay. Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion?
Is that just cash that you give them, or...
Yeah, it's just made up to the school.
So that they can determine prices, okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar? Over and over.
Alright, motion carried. Twelve A, liquid engineering water tank inspection, cleaning proposal, you all saw the email on that. What we had there, there's the contract, what they're willing to do for the price.
Yeah, it has, the last time this was done was 2015.
Twenty-eight seventy.
This is, this is a cleaning and then a metallurgical inspection?
They inspect and clean.
I didn't notice, Monty, what was, when, when are they wanting to do this, approve it?
They, they, unless they get some of their other towels lined up, they'll schedule everything with their, this would be... We're probably looking at Julie, I think, or Julie, I guess.
So, so what does it mean then for, for water service in, in town here? This is for the water tower?
Yeah, it has no effect on their, on their water service. Unless there's a major...
We're not, we're not gonna get pink water or anything like that.
Okay, we need a motion to approve this, we want to get it done, I assume we do. So, motion by Stern.
So, question that, the, the motion then is for the cleaning and expect, and inspection, but not the adder for the digital format report, is that correct? It was a $300 adder if we wanted it in an electronic format. Correct. I would, I would propose that if we wanted it in an electronic format, we could take the package they give us and scan it. And voila, something like that.
Magic. So the motion that would be for, for, I guess, the twenty-six, twenty-six fifty. Okay.
Second.
Second by Wolf. More discussion? Is the digital format any different than that, Monty, you think, or...
I don't know that they actually take the digital panel and they're showing you, and, and, I don't know. At least they haven't advanced. And we had the same option for a digital format.
What I gathered was they were just basically giving a sheet on the disc.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Wolf?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carries. Approval bills, we do have a few on the table here. Thanks, Pat. You didn't have any new erosion, did you? No, good. Yeah.
And their appraisals incorporated.
Shandys of training, Ryan from Benner, there were a few things that needed to be looked at.
Please seriously, not bad. For our healthcare program?
No, it's actually for appraisal, property appraisal.
Okay.
Motion to.
Motion by Wolf. Okay, second my stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried, me get your.